Introduce himself, starting with Council Liaison. The City Code authorizes non-regular members and three alternates. Alternates are designated to vote upon actions with disqualification of regular members. Form of five members who are alternates is necessary to conduct business. I declare the quorum present. I'm fine. Whoever wants to start.
Sure, Emily.
Jane Robinett.
Shannon Hawk.
Randy Hallington.
Sarah Michael.
Bunny Tricky Cotton.
Freebie Young.
And vote.
Penny Quigg, Vice Chair.
Anne Strachan, City Staff.
Eric Barron, City Staff. Oh, sorry.
Anyway, how it works.
Corinna Bliss, City Planner.
So we don't have any members asked this evening. Are there any members who are disqualified from voting on the agenda? The voting members are as follows. Are actually everyone present.
All regular members.
All regular members.
None of the alternates.
Randy Holston, alternate, Sarah Michael, alternate. Is someone in attendance to this end case P two, three, zero, one, four, two, eleven Commerce Drive? Are any requests for conveniences?
No.
Any requests to be ordered?
No.
Courtney, would you please read the format of the hearing and order of this?
Mr. Chair, I would like to briefly describe the procedures of the Commission. Proceeding through the meeting are being recorded, so please project your voice when speaking and give your name and address to the record. Your only presentation by the applicant shall be limited to ten minutes. The Santa Order Beach cases is follows. After interaction of the request by city staff, the applicant under consulting will provide information on the request. A presentation by the applicant shall be limited to ten minutes unless additional time screen about admission. The applicant shall have additional three minutes for closing testimony requested. We will let us hear from supporters of the request. We will then ask here from a phone to the request. We will then ask here if anyone else who was just to speak on the request. Testimony shall be limited to three minutes each unless additional time screen about admission. City staff will then make recommendations on their request. In order to reduce the time necessary to hear an application, our system printed materials including staff reports and applicable findings shall not be read to the record unless directed by the commission. Commission will post testimonies on the floor. Mission will then discuss the proposal and publicly make a determination with reasons. The formal motion shall be positive, that is at the motion shall be made to accept the request as presented or as modded cases stipulations to positions. A final vote will be taken with eyes of favor and made close. The chair shall ask the results of the votes, specify the number of votes cast in favor to the number of votes cast against. All documents are entered as exhibits for all items under consideration at this meeting. City Code of City Jackson as amended, the conference of plan and land use map. Items of applications under consideration. The list of applicants and list of property owners prognosis were sent. You have to have a publication of public notice in the newspapers. Probably self-drawn plans and your renderings under consideration. Those who are referring to staff, staff reports, municipal proceedings, or plans of other materials when it has public for the applicants. Rules of procedure for the just city planning and commission. These items are publicly available inspection through the Department of Planning and Package Services or the behalf of the city clerk. Please be advised that any items are presented, distributed, or otherwise received for any to the cases under consideration because it are be the commission. This includes any photographs, drawings, petitions, and letters. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Courtney. I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So, second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
You may be voted. Trade and I said yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the regular minutes, regular meeting minutes of April thirteenth?
Right, my own motion.
Do you remember those meetings?
Well, I refresh my record last.
I got a second.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Ms. Chair, one moment.
Yeah.
Because we have a new person.
Yes.
Our Associate City Attorney. We've already done introductions.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's in another meeting.
May?
Oh, Sean. Oh, I'm sorry. I saw Emily. I know Emily, so. Speed everybody. Sorry I'm late.
We have not received any.
We have no communications on any of the case.
On to, uh, two eleven Commerce Drive case. Courtney, can you please present the case?
This property is outlined in blue the screen and is at two eleven Commerce Drive is zoned into general industrial. And surrounding zoning includes C two, general commercial to the north with their being uses such as off-space restaurant retail. Then to the east of the property is sold into general industrial with their being uses such as wholesale and off-space. Then to the south is also into general industrial zoning with their being uses such as a contractor's trade shop. And then to the west zoning is C two, general commercial, as well as a little bit further west being RS one located in the residential. And then those used to be vacant commercial land, vacant undeveloped land, and then also wildlife preserve and recreation area. This is closer aerial image of the site, again outlined in blue, and it shows facilities such as the gravity mains in green, and then it also shows, you can see better up that there is an existing structure on that side located towards the north property line. Here is a street view looking from the intersection of Merchants Drive, which is just south of that property, about one hundred and fifty feet. So looking from that intersection of Merchants Drive, Commerce Drive, north towards that property, you can see the mix of commercial and industrial uses in this area. So what the the applicant is requesting today is a rezoning from general industrial, that M two to the C two, which would match that north zoning there. And they want, what those use they have is for dry cleaning, they drive through. And right now, sending that into, that's not a permitted use for them. So in order to, the only districts that allows it directly to the drive-through is the C one, C two, and C three. So they're requesting again to rezone it from M two to G, T two, to allow, to permit for that use. And the role of the zoning commission in this case is to direct anybody and then pass on their representation to the city council. And the case packet materials, as a part of the rezoning review, is review criteria that the outpatient supply responses to other application materials found in case packet. And additional staff has also provided response to the review criteria, the staff report also in the case packet. Those are initial details. Are there any questions?
Courtney, anybody have any questions for Court? I'm sure there's other questions for staff. We'll now hear from persons who'd like to present the case. We have a microphone? I guess the whole room.
Yeah, we do not have a microphone for any voice projection, but we are recording.
Okay.
Thank you. Pick it up.
Yep.
If you would, speak your name and address.
I'm Brian McMillan with Central Missouri Postal Services, twenty-five hundred East Picardy Street. And here on behalf of Nick Shrimp, who is the client and also the owner of this property, is proposing to put the dry cleaners. So, uh, anyway, Mr. Shrimp, they came to me saying that they bought this property already and, uh, and I didn't think anything about it. Usually the first thing I do is check zoning, but this was Sony right next door. And then what their use is, is the dry cleaners, but it's not just a dry cleaning dry cleaners, but they actually do the dry cleaning in the building. And it's kind of a industrial type building, which is doing dry cleaning to me seem like industrial use. So it's like it fit both of those zones, so. We didn't think anything about the zoning and we hurried up to do a, oh, a plan for it, because he has to be out of his current facility very soon. And so, um, so anyway, we submitted plans and he found out we don't have the right zoning, so. But anyway, that's why we're here this evening and we do appreciate you having a special meeting for us. As he is standing there to get out of his current facility, so. But, yeah, we, uh, I think this will be a good bit for the neighborhood and there's no dry cleaners anywhere in this area, so. It's a big loss to the community and building gets open again. We have to answer these questions and Mr. Shrimp will be able to answer anything to it.
Questions for.
Sometime back, we worked on a project over on Industrial Drive. That was going to include a dry cleaner over there. Are you it?
I was.
Okay. So this is, this is the same thing, different location. Okay.
And so this facility will actually do the dry cleaning onsite. It's not just one where they drop off and pick up.
Will be processing and doing all the cleaning at that location.
Because most of them are just.
Drop stores.
Right.
Just drop it off.
You have one up there and Peter Goldsman's old building.
So that's where we're moving from.
Oh, okay. Any questions? So, is there anyone present who'd like to speak in favor of this request? Do you want to speak on that? No one, uh, no one here in favor to speak on the request? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of this request? Is there anyone else who would like to just speak on this request? Without close testimony, Courtney.
So, just for quick, here's a view of the area. It is shown in industrial, but it is right there adjacent to that commercial destination. That's where the factors that go into consideration when they're zoning. So, and then further, you know, the analization of the request. Staff has found that the use would be, or the rezoning would be compatible with the plan and uses or the use proposed, use dry, so the drive-through will be, I don't know, the mixed, first use of the area. Any site functions and the site plan and et cetera would be reviewed, site plan review process, meet all the applicable requirements. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning. And so the rezonings or the form motion is just the same one to recommend the rezoning from an M two, general industrial destination to the C two.
Any questions, Courtney? Shane, you have engineering providing up?
I'll add just a little. Courtney, can you go back to the zoning map?
Mostly because I want to talk about it.
Back in two thousand and seven, there was a young planner, as his very first staff initiated reason, proposed a rezoning of the area up here from industrial to commercial. And, uh, and so that came in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission in early two thousand and seven. And there was some thought into that line, but it was kind of recognized that it was a mix in this area. And so this particular case is kind of a reflection of that, that it is kind of a mix of different uses in that area. And so from a land use perspective, uh, there's not a, not a whole lot of concern here. Yeah, it is right up against the highway, but it was my first to staff initiated app. Make sure that that got mentioned.
Institutional memory being what it is.
Yes, it is. So, and it was, um, actually a recommendation within the nineteen ninety-six comprehensive plan at the time to, to, to get a, you know, a, a line, you know, give a differentiation there between that commercial and industrial kind of use. Because obviously curves is not an industrial use. Again, happy to answer any other questions.
Anybody having questions for staff? See none? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to recommend approval of the rezoning of a general point four five acre property address to eleven Commerce Drive from M two, general industrial to C two, general commercial.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carried. If, uh, Courtney, this will be proceeding on the city.
Yes, it will be introduced on October second and then go forward on October sixteenth if it comes in favor. Both of them will be.
You guys want to stick around for, um, riveting updates?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so move on there.
Yes, that's. Updates on prior cases. There are a total, I think, two, uh, eight cases to report on because there was two months of activity. And so I'll flow through here. Uh, first, if you recall back in April, the, uh, the special exception permit for a truck stop out on Militia Drive. Uh, and so that was approved at the city council level along with the, um, the, uh, the tile on sign up by the highway that was associated with the gas station. And so that gas station is under construction. I'm told it's weeks away from completion, so looking forward to that. Uh, so not only in terms of the, you know, the, the ability to now get gas, you know, out there, uh, but also there's a couple of food options that are going to be located within that business for the, uh, there is a lot of people's work out there in the Algo area.
I saw it installed in the public list the other day, so.
Awesome. The, uh, it was a small P U D plan for a fourplex on North Ten Mile Drive was approved. So far no construction or permitting activity on it. Uh, a P U D plan, um, for, uh, for air-served building out on Shondale Woods. You know, again, uh, no, no permitting activity on that. It's not necessarily uncommon. Because people see their land use approval and then come back several months later for they put pieces of their business together. Um, out on Eldorado Drive, um, there was a proposal for a, a number of duplexes of, in a P U D plan format, was approved. You still haven't seen anything flow through on the construction side. A subdivision plat out on, um, Route C C and apologies, that was just an action. Oh, it was a rezoning and a preliminary subdivision plat. The rezoning was approved at the city council level. You know, when that thing moves forward, it would come back through this body as a final subdivision plat, so hopefully that. And then, uh, there were some text amendments to, uh, the sign code regarding, um, feather flags, the advertising flags. That was approved at the city council level, and there are a few businesses around town there that, where those flags are evident. We could call it was limited to one per property. And, uh, and then there was one item that was denied at the city council level, and that was, um, the, uh, rezoning for Dollar General. Located at the intersection of Rockbridge Road and Route C was denied by the city council. Honest, but. And then, um.
Dollar General, I know already. Say, how did you get?
Yeah, yeah, it was a, it was a, yes, a lively meeting. And, uh, and then a small subdivision out on East McCarty Street, um, for a couple duplexes was approved. So, again, it's fairly uncommon for that many cases to be stacked up in that short of a time period. And so, um, and so it's not that surprising that we had a lull afterward as that business kind of got condensed. Um, and it took a couple of months, just happened to, happened to hit at the right time. Uh, but that's our, that's our updates from actions of the city council.
Then move on to the, uh, done code.
Yes, and so, um, I'll probably take a little bit of an informal approach on this. Um, I've written up a bit of a staff report, uh, within the packets. And I've done a lot of screenshots out of that staff report that are pasted to the PowerPoint. So a lot of what I have to say is really flowing from, uh, from, from the staff report. But there's basically three, uh, potential zoning code amendments we'd like to present to you today. Two of them arise out of, um, what I'll say, uh, a number of variants for items that have come up at the Board of Adjustment level. And so if we're in a situation where we're, where the Board of Adjustment is issuing a large number of variances for basically the same thing, then we like to take a look at it from a, from a code amendments point of view, uh, in, in terms of if it, you know, if it's not something that needs to, it really makes sense to keep on the zoning code books, to, to look at amending the zoning code to resolve that. Uh, so the first two up on the list are in that category, and the third one relates to marijuana. And of course, there's, uh, there's been, uh, changes in state law regarding that, and so we're in need of bringing our, our zoning code up to date on that subject. Um, but I'll touch on each of them individually. First, drive-through lane standards. And so, uh, drive-through lanes are a fairly common item, uh, for, for businesses, especially fast food restaurants, but also a large number of other businesses just today, of course, the drive-through cleaning business. And, um, and so within the zoning code, there are what are called specific use standards for that type of use. So special rules that are applied to drive-through situations. And so the, the kind of overview of those rules is that, uh, there's a couple setbacks standards. One of them being that there's a forty-foot setback from a, from a street line. And so as I, I'll try to describe some of this in pictures also, uh, but give you a description. What that means is the distance between where a car is parked, getting their food out the window from a fast food drive truck, from the front of that car to the street line needs to be forty feet. I described that as a requirement that that allows a car to pull forward a bit, get situated before getting out onto the right of way. You don't necessarily want that drive-through car sitting very close to a street line. The second requirement is a twenty-foot setback from a property line. It's probably best described as a side setback. And so that's the distance between basically the side of the drive-through lane and the neighboring property line. So we have a requirement of twenty feet, um, for that separation distance. The third is a turn radius within the drive-through lane. So if you imagine as the car is making a turn within a drive-through lane, we have a, a, a radius requirement on that turn. Uh, the inside part of it, that it be a circle with a twenty-foot radius. Um, and then stacking space requirements, um, depending on the use. Uh, we have some order box mitigation type language to make sure it's pointed toward a residential area. There's special rules. Um, and then, you know, a requirement that basically the thing not be located right in the front yard of a, of a business in that setback, so. So the problem, and again, kind of laid out within the staff report, is there's been a number of variances issued, mostly associated, in fact, I think all associated with that side setback requirement. So it's a twenty-foot setback requirement from the neighboring property line, but we've had numerous situations where that setback, uh, has been varied by the Board of Adjustment. And so I tried to describe, I think, some of the reason why this is occurring is drive-through lanes are becoming more popular. And, um, where businesses tend to, to kind of attach a drive-through lane onto their building, almost as an afterthought, they're increasingly being designed with the drive-through lane as the primary kind of point of business, where they, they, they put in the drive-through lane first and then design the rest of the site around that. I'll try to show a picture of that. And so that side setback standard seems, uh, seems to be kind of harsh whenever it comes to a, to a site, site design perspective. Uh, and then, of course, it's been varied by the Board of Adjustment several times. And then the second thing I'll point out is that radius requirement, a twenty-foot turn radius for cars in a drive-through lane, um, might be a bit high. Um, as you, you know, obviously, they, you know, you don't want drive-through lanes that are extremely tight, but that, that turn radius, um, seems to be larger than it might be necessary. Um, I'll show a couple of pictures here, and we do have a screen over there, um, as, as well, if you have trouble seeing this far up here. These are a couple of businesses here in town. Uh, one is McDonald's. Again, just kind of point out the kind of the standard, you know, drive-through lane for, you know, for, you know, fast food restaurants and, you know, in, in the past, has been just attaching it kind of to the side of the building. And then that puts the customer parking kind of where it has to walk across that drive-through lane in order to get to it. Okay, this fully complies with our standards. You know, the turn radiuses are okay, uh, I believe, and, uh, it is an older site. Um, but certainly it's the, the drive-through lane is nowhere near any of the other property lines. Popeyes Chicken is a more, um, recent development, uh, built, uh, what, about five years ago, maybe a little bit longer, six or seven. And so again, you know, kind of standard arrangement with the drive-through lane, you know, around the building and the parking on the other side. Uh, again, so you can kind of see the very large, you know, kind of radius right there as they, they, they kind of fit that within the, uh, fairly narrow footprint of the building, because we're dealing with, you know, Missouri Boulevard coverage. So. But then the next picture I'll show is actually out of Columbia, and it's a Chick-fil-A. If you look at our Chick-fil-A here in Jeff City, it's not much different. Okay, and so instead of, you know, the customer traffic, having to cross across that drive-through lane traffic, you'll see that the site is designed so that the drive-through traffic is kind of independent. I think that's good. Um, you know, it kind of keeps those two traffic pieces separate. But what it does is it pushes that drive-through lane to the edges of the site. And so that's, I think, the issue that, that we're starting to see as we talk to developers, and we will continue to see, uh, unless we amend our code. And so that's the question, is, is it appropriate to amend? Is that within twenty feet of the? And so I didn't actually look at the actual property lines up in Columbia, um, but I'm, I'm assuming that the property line is probably right there. And then probably along this line as well, extra wide right away. And I'm sorry, that driveway is probably ten, ten each lane, ten feet each line. Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's probably twenty feet wide, and that's probably only about a, you know, a five or six or seven foot little landscaped barrier there. So. And then I'll also point out, so this particular curve right here, you'll see, and then there's another one, you know, here, a little bit harder to see. Those are not a twenty-foot radius curve. Uh, those are probably closer to ten feet. And so, um, and it, you know, seems to function, so. Those are the discussion points to put in front of you is, is that side setback standard still something that is, uh, is relevant? Or should the code be amended in order to, to, to reduce or something? And then also separately, the twenty-foot turn radius requirement. Is that something that's still appropriate or, or is it, uh, larger than necessary? And so within the, um, within the staff report, I've tried to, uh, touch on a number of other cities. So I've looked at other cities, trying to find out what they have on their books in their zoning code, um, regarding this topic, and gave a, you know, a brief kind of overview. And, um, the general kind of statement that I'll make is that, um, that the other city, other cities that I would like to think are comparable to ours, that do not have these types of requirements in their code.
It's a good idea to kind of relax it anyway, because if you make your drive-through by decide hard to get to or navigate, you aren't going to go to your business anyway. So it's their own interest to engineer smartly. So I have requirements whenever to their own self-interest to design smart in the first place.
Eric, can I ask, um, on the Columbia example that you have, there are fifteen feet setback of right-of-way lines. What's, what's that?
Um, and so that is something that's. Yeah, let me find it real quick. Okay, I think what that is, is similar to our forty-foot setback. Okay, so that is a separation space between the front of the car and the road.
Street, okay.
Yeah. I will say that I'm not aware, Shane, if you have any experience here, of, of that being an issue as we look at site plans. That distance, you know, in front of the car to the, to the road. Like, we don't, we don't get hung up talking to property owners or developers on that. But, but apparently it's one of the, they have a much lower scale.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Do we, do we know if anybody recently has been negatively impacted by these or they've come to? Do we, do we know if anybody recently has been negatively impacted by these or they've come to?
Um, my recollection, and some of these are, you know, the variance requests through the Board of Adjustment. If someone are somewhat dated, but my recollection is there, none of them were issues in front of the board. So I don't recall any of them having any, you know, kind of opposition.
But isn't the idea to try and minimize the number of trips they have to make here, right? They don't have to go to the Board of Adjustments.
Uh, if there's a standard that, yeah, that is, is, it being repeatedly varied, then, um, then yeah, that it, it does get, cause kind of a hang-up as developers are navigating through various, sometimes they need a rezoning and a variance situation. Now, for the purposes of discussion, I'll throw out a staff recommendation. That's what I'm trying to, and, um, so the recommendation that I would throw out is to reduce the 20-foot setback requirement to five feet. And so the logic behind that is that there is a five-foot setback requirement for commercial driveways. And so if there's somebody wanting a driveway, you know, along the side of their property, um, the, the requirement is that it be five feet off the property line. Now, parking spaces can be right up against the park, the, the property line. So you can have a driveway serving your head in parking that goes right up to that property line. Uh, but if you're putting a driveway down the side of your property, it's five feet off. Two reasons for that one, it's, it's traveling vehicles, you know, right up against the property line who knows what's going on on the other side. Um, but then also as that driveway connects to the right-of-way to the road, you know, this might be an okay example, as that driveway connects up to the road, uh, the minimum standard for a commercial driveway entrance is for there to be a five-foot radius on this curve right here. And so those two kind of lined up is you're five feet from the property line, you can have a five-foot radius when you hit the curb. So, so that's the first thing. This, for the, the radius requirement within the drive-through lane, uh, I threw out the recommendation to reduce it from 20 feet down to 10 feet. Now, I just pointed out that the minimum radius for a commercial drive entrance is five feet. So that would still be higher than that. And we don't have, as far as I'm aware, any other kind of, kind of requirements within our codes for, you know, for that very specific kind of, uh, you know, turning radius within a site, you know, outside of the driveway connections. Um, and so, so it's unique, which is, I guess, from saying to drive-through lanes. Um, but yeah, that's, those are the two recommendations I would throw.
What, what happened to the 40-foot setback straight?
Um, I have not seen any, any solid need to change that. Um, and so that line is actually measured, uh, we measure that line from the curve of the street rather than the property line. And so there is a slight difference there. Um, and so like for this example, we'd be measuring from right here, the curve along Missouri Boulevard, 40 feet back, okay, which would get to about here. Well, most businesses have that drive-through lane further back than that. Um, Columbia's example of 15 feet, um, I'll point out that it's measuring into the right-of-way line. And so there could be a, there is a difference between that right-of-way line, that property line and the curve of the street can be anywhere from sometimes just a few feet to 15 feet. And, uh, and so, um, I would say that in general, it's probably fairly comparable for Columbia's, maybe a little higher.
Like the idea of measuring the curve right-of-way, it's a little more obvious.
Are there any promotions here or what?
Um, A, a motion to direct staff to pursue it would, would be nice.
I'd move to direct staff to pursue it.
Any discussion? Be a second. Okay, um, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, may?
On the record, Eric, we had, uh, property privacy events. Aren't the discussions next time? I've had a couple of situations with clients that had neighbors build privacy fences and they don't, they get a, they get a bid from the, like, surveyor. They don't like it, so just do it anyways, there's no, so they'll build the fence and then it's up to the, the neighbor that doesn't like it to, to fight it for it. That's why I think there needs to be more.
Yeah, on that specific issue, again, I'd defer to, to city staff on that. There, there's, there's routes there that need to be pursued.
Right, but what I'm saying is there's no, there's nothing in the code that says you have to do a survey.
Yeah, right. Again, I defer to city staff. And if it's unclear that it's on the property, then there could be an issue, right? So, yeah. Um, continue on to the next one, a little more complicated. Uh, this is mini-story warehouses, so, um, so first I'll point out, so that type of use, and I'm talking the, we, we call them outdoor, even though it's all under roof, but all the units are accessed from the outside as opposed to the indoor use. And there are a few of those around town. Uh, U-Haul up on, uh, Ellis Boulevard, uh, has some indoor storage. And, uh, that indoor storage is kind of a separate category. Uh, they also off-site have, have some outdoor storage, you know, some outdoor mini warehouses. And so this is, we're, we're dealing with the outdoor mini warehouses with this discussion. Um, and so that particular use is listed in the zoning code as a permitted use of the two industrial manufacturing zoning districts in one and M2. And it's listed as a conditional use within the C2, the general commercial district. And so if, uh, if one's to be built in that commercial district, you know, again, Missouri Boulevard and, you know, large areas of the, you know, most, a fair portion of the commercial areas of our city are zoned C2. And so those conditional use permit requests from many warehouses are fairly common. Um, and so those go in front of the Board of Adjustment for review and approval by that body. And, uh, and so then also variances go in front of the Board of Adjustment for review and approval. And, um, mini warehouses also have specific use standards applicable to them. So just like the drive-through lanes, they have special rules applied to them. And so, uh, I'll go down that list. There's a requirement for a screening fence at least six feet in height around the entire perimeter of the site except the front. And the rear of buildings can count as that screening fence. So obviously if you have buildings up against your, your property line, you don't have to fence them. This is just the back of the building, but really the purpose is twofold. And that is to provide security for the site and to provide some screening because in general, many warehouses are not the most attractive type of land use. Um, at least that's kind of a, that's, that's the way I'd describe it. Also, there's a requirement for the internal driveway widths within a mini warehouse site. So the distance, if you have, if you have garages, you know, units, uh, on both sides of a drive lane, you know, facing each other, the distance between those two, so that paved driveway needs to be 30 feet wide. If you happen to only have them on one side, it reduces down to 26. Um, that's kind of rare, but it does happen. Um, there's a requirement for parking spaces of two spaces plus one space for every 200 units. Um, there's a requirement that driveway accesses for these types of sites be limited to one single access per group range. And then there's various standards associated with the use, which I won't go into. Basically, you can't run a business out of this. Can't have a flea market, uh, and I kind of, uh, boy, where was I? I think it was in Farmington or somewhere down, down southeast Missouri where there was a mini warehouse and, and it was set up as a flea market and they just opened all the garages one day, you know, a week or something and all sorts of flea market activity. It looked, looked kind of fun, but that's not what you want on a standard. And so, um, and we do get those requests, so. Um, also you obviously can't store, you know, hazardous stuff. Anyway, I've listed, uh, four different cases in front of the Board of Adjustment within the last, you know, since 2010. I think if we look back further and see a few more. Um, most of those involve conditional use permit, but invariably there's also variances associated with them when they're going in front of the board for a conditional use permit. And then some of them were just straight variances. Um, and so I'll, I'll make the statement that it's very common for variance requests to be coming to many storage uses. And I think one of the reasons is that it's a fairly long list of specific use standards that are applied to. Um, and so I'll try to go down and show visually how some of this kind of plays out. Um, we'll, we'll first go over the problem. Again, the four different variances, um, that, that went to the board. The variance from the driving lane width is the most common one, that 30-foot requirement between, between units. Um, and in general, when discussing those, you know, it's, it's just kind of referenced, it's just too much. You don't need that much space. I'm not sure what the thinking on that is. Um, perhaps it was that it gives enough room for a truck to back up to a unit, trailer, a trailer. But I, I think with the, the response to that is it's just not the way they're operated. You pull up to the side and you unload straight, kind of into the thing. Um, second, that most sites don't have an onsite office. I think those are more common, um, back in, in history for a, for a mini warehouse site to have an onsite office. Or perhaps for, for many warehouses uses that are much, much larger than what is kind of typical for, for our community. And so without an onsite office, the parking standard kind of is, is hard, is hard to really justify. Why do you need parking spaces? Where, why are they parking there? The only reason to park there is to, to be working in your unit, basically. Um, and then, uh, a, a third point down here is that conditional use permit requests in front of the board are fairly common. And, uh, it's, it's one of the more common types of lane use cases that come up in front of them. Um, I'll give a, a couple of examples here in town. Uh, first location map, uh, particular site on Hoover Road. Um, hey, our, our zoning case was just down here. This is the Gervs parking lot, uh, on, uh, Industrial Drive. Truman Boulevard is just to the, to the west. So kind of off Main Street and up in that direction is the property. Um, and so this is the, the engineered site plan drawing, um, put together for that particular, uh, development and is under construction right now. And so this case is one of them that's referenced. Uh, I realize that I didn't put addresses in the staff report, but it's, it's one of the cases, uh, that was, uh, reviewed and approved at the Board of Adjustment level just last year. Um, I think it's that bottom one listed because it's sitting in an M1 zoning district. So they sought a variance from that driveway width, from 30 feet down to 25 feet. They also sought a variance from that requirement that you could only have access from the street by one driveway. You'll see that there's two driveways there. And their, their reasoning, their, their argument for that variance is that it's a tight site and, and really, uh, you don't really have a good ability to turn around in the site. Your, your most common, you know, to, to drive the circle and exit out the other way is really the, the more logical route there. And then they, they sought a variance from the parking requirement. Uh, the board actually denied that particular variance. And so they put in a, a small number of parking spaces, uh, down here. Some of the logic that the board expressed at their meeting and, um, you know, to, to understand how the Board of Adjustment makes decisions, they make decisions based on hardship. What is, you know, that there needs to be a reason why your property is unique. Um, otherwise you need to be following the standards. And so, uh, I think they just felt that, you know, we may not agree with the standard, but it's there and you need to follow it. You haven't proved hardship, basically. And so, um, that is some of the reasoning. And so they did, uh, put a couple of parking spaces there, kind of lines up with their phase two idea for, you know, building more units in the future.
Some reason, like, what were the examples they were giving why they should, just because of the fact that it's?
Uh, for, for the parking?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, they didn't want to, how to build it. I think the argument is they wouldn't need it.
But, but other than the fact that it was, um, you know, code to have those, why were they, why were the people that denied it, said they, they wanted it, I guess?
Oh, that's right, they didn't. It's because it's a city code requirement. Yeah, it's not, it's not necessarily their job to, to, to change that code. Now, right after that, they requested staff to pursue zoning code amendments to the planning of zoning condition, which is the reason I'm here. And they actually did, um, you know, they expressed that, that is, you know, that it's, it's obvious that, that many warehouses are coming in front of them for a large number of variances, uh, and, and, um, basically instructed us to, to look at code amendments to, to resolve that. So, uh, what else would I want to touch on here? Um, oh, they sought a, a screening fence variance also, um, but it was very small. And as you can see, the site is laid out with the backs of units up against the various property lines. So they're basically shielded from all directions except for tiny little pieces, like right here and right there. Okay, instead of like, what's the point type of, um, thing there? Is that if anything, it kind of enders their ability to, to maintain the site, given the topography. And so, um, you know, said that, that was all approved, the site's under construction with the exception of the, you know, the, the parking spaces. Um, I'll give another example out on East McCarty Street. Uh, this one is not under construction yet, um, but it, it has been approved at the Board of Adjustment level. So over here is Lander Hill's Road, uh, Midwest Block and Brick is just off the, the screen to the north. Uh, it happens to be located right next to, um, a, an older mini warehouse, mini storage warehouse. And so this is the layout for it with the driveway access off of East McCarty Street and then a number of, of kind of rows of, of buildings, uh, running on both sides for those three driveways, just one side on this. Small building up here. They're kind of up against a creek and that was one of the, the main issues at the, uh, you know, as, as we were reviewing it from a staff perspective. But, uh, uh, this was, was reviewed and approved and so they, they sought, again, a number of variances. Uh, the drive width, again, requirement, reduced it down to 25 feet. And, uh, from the screening fence. And, uh, if I recall, it was just on this side for the screening fence. And the argument was what, that we'd be screening ourselves from more mini warehouses. So, um, so, yeah, it's kind of, kind of hard to justify there. Couple of pictures. Now, this one is from the site that was just next door that I pointed at, so this one's been here for a very long time. Um, and so, a couple of things to point out here, uh, there is no fence along that line. Um, and, uh, and this one happened before my time, but I believe it was a variance from the rules that were in place at the time regarding buffering. And so the rules have shifted. Uh, we, we've brought, um, a, a, a few changes into the specific use standards for many warehouses, uh, forward. And I think it was about 2010, uh, to, to change a few things. But, um, that's, that's what it looks like without a screening fence. It's, it's kind of the reason I wanted to put that up on a screen.
And I did do the site plan and at the time that was the fire department, city property and, and they weren't opposed to not have an fence there. So it's kind of part of the issue that it didn't, that there wasn't a fence within.
Uh, this is some units up on St. Mary's Boulevard. Uh, Missouri Boulevard is just, just off here in the distance. Uh, and so we're right here at the intersection of St. Mary's and Missouri Boulevard. Yeah, uh, you know, Walmart is just off in that direction. Uh, and so that's what it, yeah, again, we don't, we don't have a fencing requirement on the front yard, but that's what it could look like. Yes. Um, and so, I, I mean, it's really easy to see from the street view, there's Google Street View snippet. Um, but it, you know, continues around the rest of the site and it provides a, a, a measure of security. Uh, it's not six feet tall, I think it, I think it's four feet. Again, this one predates the, the regulations, uh, that were, uh, largely put in place and it started in 2002. And as I said, amended, uh, to a small extent in about 2010. But again, you know, an example of, of what they look like. Um, I, I've got some recommendations, but I wouldn't mind some discussion before I throw them out there. Today's standard of the driveway would be?
Today's standard, the driveways would have to be paved, correct?
Correct, they must be paved.
No question I have. If you had three parking spaces that you didn't use to base your car there.
No. And so one thing I didn't touch on within this presentation is there's there are some regulations pertaining to storage of outdoor vehicles. I was trying to avoid that for this meeting. It's a very rare use. We're usually looking at site plans for kind of standard storage.
I guess I'm confused, they're not needing an office, the need for the parking spaces. Seems pretty relevant if you're not having staff.
I also think thirty feet seems excessively wide.
I think the only reason why the parking space will make sense, saying you got someone kind of in about a town, they got the U-Haul and people there to help them. It's supposed to put their car temporarily, they got it right in one else's way, so it's not a nuisance.
It's an assumption that there are multiple people through the property at a time. But yes.
I mean, and as far as that goes, I mean, I've not had that many experiences with storage units, thank God. But the one I did, there was three vehicles helping unload a trailer because there's nobody else there at the time, you know. So, I mean, if there was, we would get ourselves out of the way. But, I mean, so there's plenty of room in those places for two or three vehicles to pull up and unload or load without parking spaces.
I can actually count them right there.
Oh, you can use it.
That one on St. Mary's, where I live, I've never seen anybody coming or going there ever.
So I have, I have five different questions laid out, and discussion points within the staff report. And I'll go over them along with, I'll throw a recommendation out there. First, is the thirty foot drive aisle width standard appropriate? I think the recommendation there would be to reduce that to twenty four feet. And so the logic there would be that that is the the width requirement for all other driveways in in commercial, you know, situations. And so, so like a parking lot with ninety degree head in parking off of each side, the width is twenty four feet, that's the standard. For the for the parking space requirement, throughout the recommendation to just remove it entirely. And to not have a parking space requirement. Obviously, if they had an office, I think it'd still be listed, you know, that as an office use, who would have a small number of spaces. For, I threw out, within the list, you know, again, there's, it's a fairly common item for it to come up in front of the Board of Adjustment for conditional use permit approval. Now, looking at the comparison of other cities that I've laid out there, it looks like it's very common for other cities to have similar special review processes for this type of use in their standard, you know, commercial zoning districts as opposed to industrial districts. And so the recommendation there would be to keep the conditional use permit process for the C two zoning district.
Can you guys what the reasoning is behind that?
It's, it's very kind of site specific. You know, you could, if if you were to locate, let's use our community, for example. We have a lot of C two zoning around town. And so there's a lot of spaces where this type of use probably fits without really having an impact on the neighbors at all. But go to put one, say, on Missouri Boulevard and you could, it it'd be a very, very kind of visual element there. You know, almost over, possibly kind of overbearing to, you know, to the area and kind of out of place. Put it next to a residential zoning district or something. Now, we do have buffer yard requirements, you know, to to put things in place between, you know, residential and commercial districts. But the conditional use permit process gives a little bit extra ability to see what kind of impact it's going to have on the neighbor. Whereas the industrial districts, you know, there's, there's a lot of uglier things that are in industrial districts. And so I'll give an example, most of the outdoor uses, outdoor storage, say a contractor's laid out yard in the commercial zoning districts are conditional use permit uses because they're outdoors, they're potentially a little bit more ugly. So I think that's some of the logic behind it. So the fourth one, limiting driveway access to to a single point, a single driveway for each street frontage. I'll say that 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 kind of, that kind of restriction is is uncommon. And I don't think it exists for any other use. And so, you know, and we have at least one example of a variance, you know, being requested and approved for it. And so, and you know, the recommendation there again would be to to remove it. And I think mostly the logic is that we don't have anything like that for any other use. And then the fifth one regarding a screening fence. So some other cities require a screening fence only in commercial districts and when adjacent to residential districts. I think it's fairly common for a security fence to be in place. And that that zoning code amendment that I referenced, you know, it's kind of a soft amendment back in about two thousand and ten. That was when it changed, when we changed from a a security fence, you know, from just a standard fence requirement to actually a screening fence requirement. As I researched other cities, it looks like a lot of other cities either do not have anything like that in their requirements. Or they might have a, they might have a security fence requirement. Or if it, they'll have a requirement, I think it's Columbia, if it's located next to a residential district, then a screening fence comes into play. Part of, part of my thinking is that it's usually when these types of uses are in the commercial districts and we get into a conditional use permit process where we're looking at what are the impacts on surrounding properties? Where that's probably, that could be a more appropriate place to bring up the idea of whether a screening fence should be there as part of that kind of review. And so, so I'm a little up in the air on that one. My note that I have here, so I'll throw it out on the table, is to remove it, the the screening fence requirement. Keep a security fence requirement of some sort. But then replace the screening fence requirement with with some sort of note that the the Board of Adjustment can require it when reviewing conditional use permits, if that makes sense.
The only time that would, screening would be important is if, you know, because the properties that you're showing, they're like immaculate, they look great. You know, I know for a fact I have, you know, travel that if you don't spray the weeds on it, it doesn't look good. So, you know, the fact that they take care of it is great, but if they, they weren't taking, taking care of it, it looked pretty ugly. So, that's my opinion. But now that they're also paid, I guess it really doesn't
I I know that's a lot, the five different things.
I agree with all of them, except for maybe the additional use, I agree with all of them.
I mean, if if the body is generally agreeable, then yeah, a motion in that direction so that we can can put it together in good faith.
It's only like to make a motion.
Again, removing the, to send this back for staffs, or do you want me to go through each one where you reduce it to twenty four feet in the driveways? And that we remove the parking spaces?
What we're speaking at, they say, we would actually have to put together a formal amendment to bring back to you.
I I defer this, I make a motion to defer to staff for a formal amendment per what has been suggested.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
All on the fun one, marijuana. Lot of time to be a planner, I'm telling you, Airbnbs, marijuana. Yeah, all sorts of, you know, in in the marijuana thing, it, you know, came in two ways. And so that's really why this is coming up is, is we dealt with it once, we dealt with it just a couple of years ago. But we tied the word medical to it in all instances. And so we inserted medical marijuana into our code. Not only in our zoning code, but it also triggered some code amendments in other sections of our code, like business licensing and things. And so then a couple of years later, the, you know, the voters come back and and approve it for recreational use also. And so the city actually, I think the law department initiated, and I think in working with finance, amendments to other sections of the code fairly quickly. And so we're kind of, we're kind of behind as far as the zoning code goes in that the business licensing code has already been updated on this topic. And so, so we're, it's basically something that needs to be fixed within the zoning code. So I'm going to present it to you and I have a recommendation on the end, but I'll be fairly upfront, we don't have a whole lot of flexibility on that. I'll try to touch on that here in the presentation. And so first, of course, with passage of Amendment Three, this is now legal. And so some of the the language within the the state law is, it kind of becomes relevant. You know, we we refer to medical and then we also refer to recreational. But in in some of the language in the state law, there's this term microbusiness, which as I understand is, if you think about it, you can have, you can now have three different types of marijuana business. You could have a medical marijuana business. You could have a medical and recreational marijuana business. And the two here in Jefferson City, I believe, have both gone in that direction. Or you could potentially have an only recreational marijuana business, not serving the medical community, basically. And so that, I believe is termed as a microbusiness. I could be wrong, but I think that's, that's how it goes. So these are now legal uses in the state of Missouri. And so we inserted these into the zoning code as as five different types of uses. Dispensary, the the retail aspect. Cultivation, growing. Infused products, so the manufacturing aspect of it. Testing, and so there's actually testing facilities to test it to make sure, you know, it it's proper. And then transportation, because that's an issue, dealing with something that, you know, still, you know, kind of illegal at the federal level. You know, there's, there's a transportation aspect to it. And so all those five uses are inserted into our zoning code as permitted uses in in kind of different districts. And so within the staff report, I lay that out. The only one that exists here today is that dispensary facility. But the other uses, you know, are either permitted in the manufacturing districts or both manufacturing and commercial. So, we also have specific use standards, again, set a rule applied to this use. And it's, it's only really has one, one rule, and that is a separation distance of one thousand feet between any of these types of facilities and any schools, childcare centers, or churches. So that is an allowance within the state law that cities could could enact. And Jefferson City elected to enact that that maximum separation distance. And so I believe, I can make the statement, that's basically the only, the only regulation on top of this thing that the city can really put, you know, from that land use perspective. Obviously, you can choose what districts they're permitted in, but the the general spread there seems seems appropriate. And for example, the city were to try to outlaw them within the commercial districts, I think that would be probably seen as an overreach. Again, so yeah, listed, listed those uses and where they're permitted in the staff report. In terms of a of an actual land use impact for a dispensary facility, it's basically a retail use. I mean, you know, ignoring what they're selling, it's just retail traffic. And so not uncommon to to many other uses. I don't know if liquor store would be a good example, but certainly, you know, any other kind of retail use is going to have a very similar type of, of, you know, traffic count. And so I have this statement here cleared by, cleared by a lot of our, Missouri state law does not provide for the ability to distinguish between medical, comprehensive, and microbusiness uses at the local level with respect to land use regulations. We cannot treat these things differently. And so the recommendation here is pretty straightforward. And that is to update our code to remove the medical designations and just treat them all the same. For discussion.
Recommendation to follow the law, follow the law.
Yeah. It's, it's basically what it is.
I mean, I'd make a motion.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay.
Okay, so what we are going to do is, is work these up to formal, like code amendments. And so actually, and often what we do is, you know, kind of reproduce a council bill or review by the Planning and Zoning Commission in a public hearing format. So many code amendments require public hearings. So we'll have to advertise it up for a formal public hearing. Our plan, we originally think of trying to do this right away, but we think we're going to wait until, we don't have any other items of business for the October meeting. And we're right up against our our publication deadline for that meeting. And so it looks like we will not have an October meeting. And so now, I know. So, but we would target the November meeting for this then. And see, see if anything else comes up on the agenda. If nothing else comes up, then our plan would be to go ahead and have a meeting for the amendments.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I'll move on to the election of officers.
So, election of officers is typically scheduled for the June meeting. So we're overdue because we haven't had any meetings. And so there are two positions, positions of chair and position of vice chair. And head out to the commission on how they want to pursue that.
They'll be stay on.
I'll go if you want me to.
Make a motion to keep them the same. Does she want, do you want to?
Any votes?
Yeah, I learned from you because I thought she might want to be chair, you know?
One time they asked me to do it, I denied it because I just didn't get that topic.
I gave up my buncle night for this.
Oh, well, you could make it worth your while then.
Dedication.
Yeah, we'd be on city council.
This is way more fun than city council.
So you've made a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, we still have one vacant position, alternate position. And so if there's anyone out there in the community, you know that
Doesn't have to be from any specific ward or?
Dang it, anyway, you got we, we try to keep a good spread, my recollection
Well, I just remember when I, they asked me what ward I was, what I came on.
And so we, we try to keep a good spread across the wards. And so if we're, we're entering one ward, we'll try to not pursue that one. If we're light in the ward, we'll try to
Can you let us know, like, just do this in email and let us?
I don't, my recollection is that we're pretty even and we are, and so it's not an issue. And all wardrobes. And it's not a requirement, it's just something we try, try to do. Anyone who's interested, the route for for piling that interest is by filling out a volunteer application, which is available on the city website. There's a single application form available for all boards and commissions. So it's just a matter of filling that out and checking the boards and commissions that they're interested in.
I mean, last time you were replacing attorneys or engineers, do you have requests right now?
So I think we have we have attorneys, we have real estate professionals. We have an engineer. So we have engineering. And so that's usually, usually kind of the three professions. Again, it's not a requirement, but we like to keep, keep some membership in those areas. No, I think it's, I think it's open for anyone to, you know, one benefit is if if they're familiar with property and development.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That's all we got.